Good evening and welcome to the July twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty-three city council meeting. I am Mayor Ross. And tonight's city council meeting is being recorded and will be available on the city's website. Welcome to everyone and thank you for joining us tonight. City Clerk Dean, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Benson.
Here.
Councilmember Watton.
Here.
Councilmember Holloway.
Here.
Councilmember Mayhew. Member Washington.
Here.
Councilmember Christensen.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
And Mayor Russ.
I am here. So councilmembers. Has anyone heard from Councilor Mayhew? Hey, um, would you deserve number or? Motion to? Excuse him this evening?
So moved second.
Okay, moved by Councilor Johnson, second by Mr. Tim Holloway. So any discussion? All's in favor of CI? Any opposed name? Okay, it's unanimous and Councilor Mayhew is excused. Thank you. So council, would you please stand and join me in saying the pledge of allegiance and Councilor Benson, would you please lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We now move to our first item of regular business is to approve the agenda. Council may have a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Second. By Mr. Tim Holloway and second by Councilor Christensen. Is there any discussion? Rep. Tim Holloway.
Uh, we'd like to pull the ILA for Fire and EMT Services Echo Glen off the consent and pull it back in the regular agenda.
Alright. Any other? Comments? Recommendations? CNN? Okay, all those in favor of the agenda as stated with pulling the ILA? Into public safety, CI?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed name? Right. Thank you. Moving on, the first item we have. Regular business is to introduce. Introduction of the Pacific West Rail Model Train Museum. Interim City Administrator Chambles, would you please introduce this item?
Yes, tonight we have Peter Hambling, who is the owner, founder, visionary gentleman. Who's brought forth the uh? Idea of hosting the Pacific Northwest Rail Museum in uh? Our town, so I'm gonna turn over to Peter.
Thanks, Mike. I uh? And the last time I said pledge of allegiance might have been the sixth grade, so it's pretty. Do that, so it's so common with. With uh, with us anymore, um. I've been corrected about using the mic, so if I go. Quiet, one of you guys need to tell me, please, and I'll step closer. So the purpose of this presentation to you, first of all, Mayor Ross and city staff. Thank you and councilmembers, thank you for putting us on the agenda, giving us time on this. The purpose of this presentation is. Uh, we made a pitch last week to three of the county members. And so my job here is to get the other four of you up to speed on what that was about. So that'll start with an update, a brief update on uh where we've come to now. And then. To propose to you a development agreement and a lease agreement. Whereby the city and our foundation enter into a cooperative effort. It's contractual, it would be contractual, but it's really best efforts and there's off ramps as Mike Chambliss has indicated. So let's go to the um. First slide. Make these. So current status is. We formed a five oh one C three nonprofit. Uh, Pacific West Rail Foundation. That was funded by uh, I'd like to introduce my wife Lori sitting on the end here, she's the. Steading hand in this craziness. But we've uh put money into that uh foundation to. Has been certified for registered the state, but not yet by the IRS. It takes them eight, nine months to do that. Uh, we put on two board members, Jack Anderson is a longtime friend of mine. And in my view, one of the finest design guys around, he formed a design firm called Arnold Anderson, which is considered. Very, very good on the west coast here in Seattle. And the other one is a neighbor of ours down the street, John Hanson, who founded and is head of. KBC Real Estate Advisors, they've done most of the real estate for Amazon. Uh, both great guys, both like me, a little bit inexperienced with corporate protocol and signatures and stuff, but great fun to work with. Um, we've also hired Jerry Johnson, who's with the Pacifica Law Group. And that uh law firm is also, I believe, the city's bonding agent. And Jerry is guiding us on on the legal aspects of this. And through Jack Anderson, we've hired Olson Kundig Architects and Tom Kundig. In particular, one of them is here, Mike Parischeck is representing them this evening, had questions for him. Uh, so we're at a stage where we're, we've gone through and old design, conceptual design, show you in a minute here. And we also uh have what I think is a hundred and thirty-two page. What I call master business plan, which has all the background you'd care to take the time to read, it's pretty. Pretty complete, including economic analysis, market analysis, et cetera, it goes on and on. The advisors reviewed and still are Howard Peggy Luckbring. Uh, I met Howard uh through Bruce McCaw, who I've known for many years. And Howard and Peggy have done a lot of work on many, many museums, the most, the most famous of which is the Flight Museum in Seattle. He was executive director for twenty-five years and really uh on the map. Uh, very gifted, just turned eighty-eight, acts like sixty-eight. Um, through him, we met Matt Hayes, who's currently the head of the Museum of Flight and has offered. Uh, to help us in whatever way he can, they can. Also John Ferguson, Museum of Glass, same thing, he's offered to help us in whatever way we need. Andy Elklashaw did all of the scenery backdrop on the existing model railroad layout we have in our basement. We met with him last week. And he is available to us to help us in this new. In the project we're talking about, he's an extremely good mural artist. Klein, we met through uh Howard again, she's had the ASGW Shell House Restoration, you may, may or may not know about it. Think they raised sixteen million so far to restore that very cool, originally a Navy seaplane base building. Bruce McCaw I mentioned, I've known Bruce through uh flying and also he's seen the railroad and he's. A very good supporter uh for me. Kelly Coughlin, you all know, and we wouldn't be here without her. She's kind of started this whole ball rolling. Next, Mike. So what we're uh? Here to talk about is um Jerry Johnson and your city attorney, David Lineham. Have discussed and I think. Come to some uh reasonable agreement on a proposed development agreement and separately a lease agreement, so this. The essential nuts and bolts are that of that are the city would provide the land. Uh, we would raise funds to to build the museum, museum relocated, design and build it. That would be this development agreement, but it'd be a two-year contract. Off ramps are in it, one of them, for example, is if we can't raise the funds, we can't get the money to do this, you know, we're not contractually obligated to pay for it. Lori and I have already put quite a bit of money into what you already know about. Really comes down to best efforts on both sides, so for example, in the land subsequent to. Any construction we find or you, uh, the city finds archaeological remains or pollution, obviously that's not grant for you guys, there's a bunch of them in there. Um, and then. At the end of this, we would want to go into an operating partnership between Pacific West Rail Foundation and the city. Uh, once the museum is built and I've continued to operate that for many years. Okay, Mike, next one. Biggest hill for us, in my view, is to find the funding. The very early estimates look somewhere in the neighborhood of thirty to forty million dollars, that's a lot of money to raise, but I'll try. I'll give it a shot. It's certainly worth trying, but I can't promise it, it's a big hill to climb. I don't think it's financeable, uh, we're not counting on government assistance of any kind at the moment, if it helps. If we get it, it helps, but at the moment, it's a, the main funding has to come from private sector and probably from uh individuals. I'll start with them, maybe it doesn't, I know, see what happens. Next. So the question comes out, why, why Snakqualmy? Well, one of the reasons, probably the biggest reason in my view, is that uh Rob Nelson, who's sitting here and David Hazelton, two of the three. Who've been building this for the last twelve, fourteen years. Want to carry on and they would operate the museum and that's really key to me, I'm, I'm very much about people. Uh, and the fact that Rob grew up here, lives in North Bend, David lives in Nisko and Todd Gamble is the other one, lives in Snakqualmy. The fact that they want to continue on and see this happen is a really big deal to me, so. Ethan, you know from previous, we talked to Tacoma. And one of the big reasons not to go there is many, but one of the reasons is. Uh, we lose these guys and if we lose these guys, that's a big loss to me, probably the biggest. Um, there's a lot of railroad history in this town, as you know. When we, when I started thinking of designing uh and and we built this model railroad, one of my requirements was that we. We would need to be able to take it apart, move it to a place where a lot of people could see it besides in our basement. And uh, that would need to be next to a rail line, it could be a BNSF line, it could be a railroad museum line, which is what you've got here. It's a perfect fit, particularly since they run steam trains. And that's part of what the railroad, our railroad is all about. Um, it's a great location, uh, I have to say, particularly last time coming out of Bellevue, a big traffic jam. Every time I count here, it's just, it's wonderful, sorry, it's a personal thing too. And I think um, I felt from the beginning, uh, when I first was in front of you in September, there's a lot of support here. And I imagine that's probably with the citizens as well, we'll see. So um. Michael can walk you through some of this, but these are some of the sketches that Olson Kundig has come up with. The uh, we'll show you the building in a minute, but this is a ground floor. Artist's version concept of what it would look like. Obviously, the model railroad either side, and you can see upstairs, there's a mezzanine which would go around the perimeter of the second floor. Next, Mike. Um, and that's a view from the mezzanine and looking down onto the layout, what we would do is take the layout apart. Um, move it, uh, expand it to be ADA friendly and offer enough space in the gallery to expand it even further over ten or fifteen years. And that would be a fifteen thousand foot gallery and the scenery you had, have to be added to that, some of which, um, that would be Todd Gamble. Some of which we would build high enough, it would go above the mezzanine level, so you're seeing quite a bit of vertical. As well as uh horizontal display. Next. So this is um, the design that Olson Kundig has come up with, I. I mentioned last week, it's architecture is a very personal thing, I happen to really like it. We, we bounced around between doing a building that looked like a railroad building from way back. Or one that uh was maybe a little bit um. Maybe old fashioned, uh, but I like what they've come up with and I never would have thought of it, it's, it's quite interesting. Yeah, this is a uh view from the corner of the Parkway and Railroad Avenue. And that's the snowplow you've seen there before. Um, it has a pitch roof uh on the north side, a clear story along the top, that was Tom Kundig's idea. Um, and it, it is, he didn't know at the time, but it's reminiscent of an old railway car, a Pullman car out of the nineteen hundreds, would have that on the roof. Um, this is the entrance side of the building and you can see an upstairs deck of the uh. The southeast corner of it. Next. So this is where it would sit on the lot, we. Played around quite a bit with where to site the building, uh, we came out here, Tom and his crew. And we all walked around and I initially, and Tom McKundig originally thought we should put it back against the, the uh. Riparian forest there, if you call that, the trees. But the more we thought about it, the more we thought, back it up a little bit to the Parkway. Because that's in a way the least attractive side of the, of the site. Uh, and it gets the building far enough back where at that upper corner I just mentioned. You can see some of the mountains, you can't see Mount Si entirely, but you can see some, it's a bit, a bit better view on the outside deck. The uh entrance would be off the Parkway. Up the Parkway into the, the campus, if you will. One of the things I think would be really good if we could do it is to have the exit. Onto Railroad Avenue there. Richard Anderson is not happy with that concept, uh, we would need a railroad crossing signal there. That's probably three quarters of a million dollars to put in, but if you did that. Then everybody has to turn right and it would take the traffic into the town, which is, I think, one of the benefits. Kelly and I met, met with Mark Mullet and and Lori actually about a month ago. Uh, who's now running for governor, but he also added, I wouldn't have thought of it, that it would bring that traffic going towards I ninety, past the casino. Which might be interesting for the tribe or helpful to them. So this is just one concept, but this is sort of where we came up with is the best uh position to site the building. Next. Uh, that's a view from the Parkway looking uh. South. It would have, the building would have to be raised above basic blood elevation. So with that, we thought, why don't we? Uh, dig down and make the parking, a lot of the parking underneath the building where you can see the cars there. Um, the left side in this drawing is really the entrance and. Yeah, maker space, um, upstairs event space, um, some catering facilities and so on. And then the, the right two-thirds is the gallery, which is about a hundred and sixty-five feet long and nine, was it about ninety-five feet wide? Yeah, yeah, fifteen thousand square feet. So to put that in perspective, our basement is thirty-seven hundred feet. Take that apart, put it back together to make it ADA, that goes to seven, eight thousand square feet. But to give it room to grow over a period of two, ten or fifteen years, it'd go to fifteen thousand, the reason for that. Is you want it to be, to evolve, so when somebody comes and sees it now, they come back in six months, it's a little different, or a year, you've added a new line or a new section. You can stage that with marketing and sort of curtains and stuff and kind of make a surprise. You can see the Claire Story up top here. Next. So. It's hard, I can't leave the mic to, to point to it, but. What we would do is take our existing model railroad layout, uh, take it apart into. Get out the stairwell in our basement. And then put them back together in big sections, so for example, put to the right that yellow. Section there on the far right of that one. That is currently the lower uh yard in the layout. That would come apart in pieces, put back together in a big section and keep that in one piece, and so then we take, yeah, that. So once we've got these big sections that already exist, but we can't get them out the door. Then we would rearrange those in a, in a way what I call inside out, so right now. When you're downstairs in the basement, you walk around, you're on the inside of the layout looking out. And. There's two things wrong with that, and one of them is. There's no fire escapes, you can easily put in there, you have to go underneath, there's no easy way to get into the basement without going through it. Uh, an entrance is too low, if you take it the other way. Railroad inside. And, and people walk around the outside, now you got plenty of opportunity, but fire escapes in. And there's no problem getting into it in the first place, so it's, we've reorient, reoriented everything. In big pieces and then added other sections, so for example, at the very top there. You can see that red line, that would, that's a whole new section. It would be built over the next ten or fifteen years, there's another one down below here and another out there. So this is our way of saying, really, the gallery has to be fifteen thousand square feet to, to be able to allow it to evolve and, and grow like that. And change. Okay, next. So on the right side, uh, maybe go down, stick back one, Mike. Yeah, uh, that one, so on the right side, upper right is the uh, the entrance to the lobby. And then uh, below that is a gift store, gift shop. Uh, next to that is a maker space. And sort of in the upper middle is a theater, I'm not sure if we do that, but probably. Um, so these are just details of what we've come, come up with at the moment. It's, it's evolving still a little bit, but when, it's easier to show this and, and, and uh, right in front of you rather than point to it. But this is one idea of how things would be arranged, where the restrooms are and so on. So the flow would be in through the lobby and then down a corridor and then into the layout, and it would be one way. Through the layout, so Mike, can you bring it up to about there, yeah, right, that one or down, down a bit, right there, yeah. So the analogy I've always used is, it's much like a haunted house. Different directions, if you can help it, so you come in there, yep, then go yes, up and around and you, you would exit. Yeah, all the way around. And as you do that, you'd go into these districts and the districts would be. Um, like a haunted house, they'd be uh focused on one area. Like uh, the southwest in New Mexico, and you could see bits and pieces, teaser views of, of the other areas in the layout. You go through a little tunnel and you're into the next district, but by the time you're done, you exit out the lower right there. Um, so you couldn't go backwards through it. So the whole idea, in my view, my vision is to get lost in it, it's an experience where you go in and you get immersed in it. And for a while you forget of the reality till you come back out and you see a real tree sitting. You could transfer between reality of the real world, full scale. So that's the lower level, next one. Uh, now you can see the mezzanine, so again, on the right side, this is really designed for a. Accommodate about two hundred people for an event, which is really a popular aspect of this whole project. On the left is an upstairs mezzanine around the perimeter and right through the middle is what I call a sky bridge. And a sky platform in the middle, so underneath that sky platform, that square in the middle would be the operating center. Where the software and displays are, whoever's running it would be underneath there and they would be uh raised up below, so they could see over the whole layout, but they'd be below that. Lower level there, possibly with a clear plus, plexiglass floors, you could actually see down into the controls. So um, in the, in thinking of the event space. In my view, that mezzanine has to be. Wide enough to handle tables of people, whether you're doing a fundraiser or an auction or whatever. Probably easier to do the event upstairs on this level than downstairs in the layout, it's a bit more constrained, you could do it, but it'd be a bit more uh constrained. And then on the lower right, you can see that darkened area, the shaded areas outside deck. Uh, again, for events and, and people wanting to go out, enjoy the, the outside weather, we have to keep. Layout itself in a, in a reasonably good climate controlled environment, temperature and, and humidity. Um, even model railroads like the real ones, when they get warm, the rails expand, you get buckling and if it's cold, they, they break the joints. So there's a little bit of, and, and moisture is a big deal as well. So there's need to, you don't need to control it museum quality, but you need to control it house quality, basically. Uh, next one. Uh, that's a lobby view. Again, and Michael can speak to this, uh, but this is an early conceptual view of what the lobby might look like, uh, coming into it. Gift shop to the left. Uh, next. Same upstairs, we can see with the observation or the outside deck uh through the windows there. The concept is, is a, is a very simple design with heavy steel uh beams. Steel light beams, probably very black, dark, skin dark uh metal and wood in between. The idea, in my view, and, and theirs is to. To convey the feel of a railroad without actually labeling it, calling it that. Okay, next. Um, there's a view from outside on the southeast corner, looking at railroad, I'm sorry, Snakqualmy Parkway. Behind the trees there. This, this end of the building would be cantilevered out about, was it like twenty feet? Fifteen feet, yeah. Oh yeah, thanks Rob, told him I forget that, um, and solar panels on the roof, it's important. To all of us that this building, this be designed sustainable as best we can. And so you see solar panels on the roof on this, on this uh side of it. Okay, next. Um, this is a really uh very brief and. Rather simple analysis of what the balance sheet, should say the revenue. Uh, and expenses would look like. We feel fairly confident we could reach seventy thousand a year and possibly up to a hundred thousand, maybe more. So at that level, this is a snapshot of what the, the financials would look like. And that would generate a profit of two hundred and seventy on revenue of million six. Um, fifteen staff, some of those would be permanent, some of those would be part-time, probably seven or eight permanent and the rest would be part-time. You can see salaries there and benefits and, and other expenses, this is, this is a really uh first cut at it, so I don't want to take it. Uh, too detailed. I've always felt this needs to run like a business here. As a nonprofit. Okay, next. I know you can't read this and I. I uh always swore I'd never show slides that nobody can read, but you can see it in the handout, but this is simply to, to prove to you, we've done. A pretty good cut at what the schedule would be over the next three or four years. Um, and the font's way too small to you, I can't even read it from here, so. But uh, we, we, we thought about this long and hard, I mean, it's going on two, three years now. We've done a lot of thinking and a lot of um. Analysis and a lot of what ifs and. You know, uh, positive, negative scenarios and so on and on, it is, it's, it's pretty well rung out at this point. Okay, next. And that's sort of the last slide showing what it would look like from a derail car going by, looking at the uh, at the entrance end of the museum. Okay, I think that's last one, yep, that's it.
So I do have a question, you showed fifteen employees, are you also going to have volunteers?
Yeah, yeah, I think a lot more than that, I, I believe fifteen employees would be uh probably two-thirds part-time. Or half-part-time and the other would be full-time, th- these would be two and with Todd, three of them. I think in this. In this uh kind of railroad environment, not, I mean, the city, but I mean, model railroad, you can get plenty of dozens. And they would do it almost for, for free, if not completely free.
Councilor Benson?
Um. This is so exciting, I, I think your numbers, seventy thousand gate are very conservative. I know that our museum here, I. Is hitting hundred, twenty, hundred, thirty thousand, I think a very large number of those people are going to want to come. And see this museum as well, as well as this museum bringing in a whole other demographic that's kind of, I think. Attendance to both attractions are going to be. Uh, higher and I, I think seventy thousand is a very conservative estimate. Of what, I, I did want to know, none of the trains are actually haunted, right? That, that was just an analogy.
Well, you, you might have to find out.
Okay, alright, alright, well, would that be another employee that would take care of that? They're just model ghosts, okay, alright.
Um, to, to answer that um. Conservatism, it's, it's really, I was talking to Lori about this uh, this afternoon, it's very important to me. I'm not a, um, a salesman and it's very important to me that I present this to you. As conservatives, I can get it, I mean, it's got to stand on its own two feet, but there's no point in inflating it and telling, telling you something that you want to hear. When we don't believe in it, we think that's very conservative. In fact, when, when we started with Tom Kundig and his crew. We went down to the Tillamook Museum, which they did. And interestingly enough, uh, we talked about attendance and Tom said, one of the problems you're going to face, and this is his. Belief and one of the reasons he's doing this with us. Is one of the problems you're going to face when you get way more people than you expected and it's a real problem. They found that in Tillamook, all of a sudden, people don't have parking, they got to go a long ways away. They, they get into tussles between people grabbing parking places, somebody didn't get it. Uh, you need police guiding it, you know, road crew, everything. And it becomes really quite a task, quite a challenge, I hope you're right. Um, that's a problem we can, we can solve, but we'd just like to be conservative when we put this out. So the break even is about thirty thousand, I think that's easily achievable and I think seventy thousand is also achievable. Uh, and we could probably go beyond that.
Councilor Johnson?
Uh, yeah, I'm also thinking about how the falls has an upper lot and an upper lot to the upper lot. And it's um, it's full and overflowing as it is. So they've got lots of parking over there.
Well, one, one of the.
Yeah, the, the parking is, is a problem, I don't have a solution for you, but.
Yeah. Where, where do you have overflow parking, whether it's for the falls, like you currently use that a lot for, for that purpose? Or you have a lot of people attending here. Over to you.
Councilor Walton?
Uh, I'm still thrilled about this, I think this is the piece that's missing. For our local economy of bringing people down the Parkway and turning right. To go to the main part of town, I did the numbers before and crunched them because I'm just curious, seventy thousand. Sounds like a lot of people, if you're open every day, which I assume you're going to be pretty much three hundred and sixty days a, a year. That's two hundred visitors, fewer than two hundred visitors a day. And if you have parking, which I've seen kind of numbers and sketched it out, I mean, that is so easily doable. The way it is, I, I agree with Councilmember Benson, I think seventy thousand is going to be on the very light end. Uh, but I think the other economic development. Uh, but I think the other economic development piece is. You know, we have a railway and it'd be wonderful to make a connection of the, of the inner urbans that were sparked. By the dam being built here in Snoqualmie. And I think it brings a lot of history and I think there's ways of bridging. The, the, the fact that the inhabitants of Snoqualmie. Includes a broader. Broader representation and we'll bridge that. We'll figure that out and it's going to be a win for everyone. So.
One of the things I forgot to mention today for you who weren't here. That I did mention last week is I think the fact that that property is, or that lot is called the gateway property is really, it's a cool name to me and it should be a gateway. For the city. Another thing I forgot to mention is we, we have accommodated or planned on a visitor center in there. Just not one with magazine racks or. For a handouts. We can find a better way to do that, I think, but it needs to represent the city that corner lots in such a perfect place for it.
Council Washington.
Thank you. This is very exciting. And so I've heard a lot of buzz around it and just being here today and actually getting to see the visualization. It's, it's amazing. My question is, um, you have to excuse me, I missed the last F and A meeting. I would have been present, but I wasn't able to make it. So the first, um, your first slide there, you had a bullet point of a two year contract agreement. Is that meant to be like a renewable lease agreement every two years?
Well, the two year, what I meant was, and, and David could speak to this. Between him and Jerry Johnson, who crafted it. In my view, and I, these guys will tell you, some of them will tell you by experience, I push this pretty fast. And part of that is. We're employing these guys full time or burning through money every month. It's good money, but it's still clocks ticking away. So I push pretty hard. In fact, maybe a little too hard. But it seems to me, two years is enough time for me to figure out, can we raise this money or not? It's not going to be a hundred dollars, five hundred dollars a time. It's going to be a million and five hundred thousand at a time. And that seems to be plenty of time for us to figure out, can we do it? And for the city to understand, is that? Is that property still okay? Is it, is it contaminated with pollution? Does it have archaeological? Remains in it, whatever. It's enough time to, to, I think, run this as hard as we can and find out it's going to go or it isn't.
Okay.
I think it will. It'll certainly motivate me. So, but whether we make that two years and a two year extension, that's okay. You've got to start somewhere with the term. I didn't want to give it too long a term to begin with. Because so the work expands to fill the time you give it.
Makes sense. Makes sense. Thank you.
Council, any other questions or comments? Council Christensen.
Uh, thank you for being here today. I definitely appreciate your time. Um, I think it's a, obviously the project has so much potential. Um, I know for probably most of the age ranges that we have in the city that, that they would have something to do their significant interest. I know how much my children love museums and how much I do as well as a number of other council members. I think it would be a great tie in for our community as well in terms of being next to the falls and next to downtown. It was my understanding that the process going forward, that we might have a round table to kind of go through the specific agreements and talk about those at a later date.
Yep.
To work out those, because I, I do have some, some additional questions about that. I do have. Some questions about parking and how the street would be handled. And I know that you're working on that.
Yep.
As well on your end. And so at this point, I would just say, I'm really excited to see where it goes from here.
Thanks.
And this could be a fantastic addition to our community. So thank you.
Yeah, welcome.
Mayor Poe Tim Hallaway.
So with that segue, uh, you should have received some communications. Our intention is to have a workshop for us to get together and discuss. Yeah. How do we move this forward? Are there any concerns we want to look at? Any risk mitigation, whatever? Workshop one week from today. Here. Uh, we'll start to work through some of those issues and see what we can, how we make this happen or what are the issues?
This, this came up in the last week's meeting with the F and A group and I offered, if you guys want us to be there, we will. If you don't, we won't. So it's your call whether you want that. That help.
Council Johnson.
Were we planning to? Allow for some public comment during that period to get feedback from the public because they might have some concerns that we may or may not have thought of ourselves. And I'd like to give the public the opportunity to speak up. Soon rather than later about this.
Council Mayhew.
So great idea. Of course, I know we are, we're all interested in things like that. My, my own thought is. There's a lot of aspects of this. This is just fantastic presentation you just gave. Thank you very much. Covered a lot of ground. And I think. My, my view is when we get to a council meeting, which is hopefully. The next one. I think we'd all like to be in a position to take action. So what would that take for us to get from here to there? I think. I, I, you know, I myself have a bunch of questions. That I'd like to hear. Peter's team respond to, or maybe even. You know, ideas, thoughts, if you will, that they might take away and come back and say. As you all know, some of my thoughts are, yeah, thanks, Mayhew. Okay, can we move on? And some are. Every now and then actually worth listening to. And so gives them a chance to kind of. Hear from each of us as well as us to maybe hear from each other as, as we sort of think about some of the other big things. That have come through. Uh, as counsel, I think us working kind of together, I, I think we've made things a lot better. So my thought is rather than sort of a, a constrained meeting like this is, it's difficult for each of us to have. Discussion is to have. Really more of just a discussion where we all kind of share thoughts. And I think it would be everything. Of course, the public is welcome to watch that. There's nothing secret happening. But I would say my goal would be let's get. The, um, the bunch of us through our thoughts and with the team. That's proposing to do this so that we really have something that's more pulled together. I don't like that. Not more pulled together, but, but we've all sort of talked through together. That's really what I mean to say. And. So that, uh, you know, and. That, you know, then invite the public, of course, at our next council meeting to give input, but I think. You know, if we're going to spend an hour together. You, you all know from things we've done together, the seven of us will. And let me say it differently. The eight of us elected people will have a lot to say. And, and we'll use up that hour with the applicant. That's the right term. Uh, and I, I think they'll be really productive. But then maybe let the, the public then. Ha- having all of those thoughts sort of been thought through and factored in, then the public would speak at our next council meeting if they wish to. And we could take that in at that point, but. Assuming there isn't any surprise at that point, we maybe are in a position to. Agree on something. So long way of saying, let's let the public come, but let's not try and structure it for them to give input. I think that'll chew up too much of our time, but in an informal environment, frankly, any. Any member of the public who has something to say, I'm pretty sure will manage to hear it and get it said. And. Um, I, you know, I, I just think more of an informal kind of meeting is what we're, what I would suggest we do.
Is there city attorney, David Linehan?
Thank you, mayor. Just to respond to some of the questions about the sequence and the public input opportunities. So just so you have a kind of a, an overview of the way we're been thinking about structuring the transaction. Would actually be two main documents. There would be the lease to be a long term, say fifty year agreement. Uh, but with the lease would be another document, a development agreement. And that development agreement would take care of a lot of these preliminary questions that you're talking about. Like, how's this, what's this actually going to look like? What are the roles of the parties going to be? What are the off ramps? Things kind of go south. So that a development agreement will lay out that kind of, that kind of information. Uh, but that development agreement, certainly the council could. Your public input about whether or not it's worth going into the agreement and moving forward with the. Project as a whole, but even once the development agreement is signed, the way the development agreement is structured is there's an opportunity at that point as. The parties are working out the final details of what the design is going to look like, what the building is going to look like, what the, how the, how it's going to operate and fit within the city as a whole. There's opportunity there built in for public participation and community engagement as well in that process. So I think you'll get a chance to hear from the community. You know, at multiple points throughout this, if you decide to, you know, approve a development agreement and move forward with the project.
So Mr. Linehan. And you know, then that our next step after tonight's presentation is working on the development agreement.
Yeah. So the parties have been very hard at work. Reducing all of these ideas and all these moving parts and thinking about the future and. Reducing it all to, you know, pretty detailed set of documents. The idea would be, I think, with the mayor and the city administrators' coordination would be. To have a discussion about some of any of those, you know, deal points that you want to talk about, but then to approve the development agreement. And the lease, because they would be kind of a package deal. Knowing that then that just kind of gets the ball really moving forward or the, the car moving down the tracks. It doesn't actually, you know, result in anything that you can't. Continue to influence or even back out of if necessary. So. I hope that, I hope, I hope Peter agrees with what I just said.
Very much so, yeah. And you know, and from my side and, and talking with Jerry Johnson and Jerry with David, Jerry's comment to me was. That it, it's an extraordinary good fit. And he's, he's never been in the position, and this is very much a compliment to all of you. He's never been in a position where a city is so. Cohesive and so coordinated. In what they want to do with us. It's the same thing. It's, it's pretty refreshing to, and I think, and surprising. And. The other thing is for, for us to me to go out and start trying to raise funds for this. We have, we would have two things in our favor. One is we've already built the railroads. They can see it. It's there in our basement. Which is unusual. Normally you have raised funds for something. It's a conceptual thing and you've got to go get it. And the other one is, uh, if you all agree to this development agreement. We have that in hand. The land's already been, if you will, set aside for it. That's really important because then people, and by the way. I don't see the fundraising as people putting money in the bank as much as committing. And so once they, once they commit, they're committing to something that already has some feet on the ground in the first place. And we wouldn't begin anything. We would begin taking apart the railroad or any construction until all those funds are there to support it. So that, that began for one of the questions coming out of the citizens is what happens if it gets started and then you can't finish it. There's a foundation that we wouldn't get to that point. Even start it till that, till money's available.
Council Mayhew.
Yeah, I just to make sure I'm. Correct on what I thought I heard last week at F and A meeting. Am I correct that the current sort of working draft, if we can, if that's the right term. Of the development agreement and the lease, I believe, are available to the council now. Is that correct? And, and if so, the thought, as I understood it, so to give you a two part, you can answer both, uh, is. That you would welcome any. Uh, questions or thoughts that any of us have now, so that, you know, we've got a couple, few weeks here. About a week from tonight, as Mayor Pro Tem mentioned, where we're going to meet and have some discussion. Then two weeks after that, next council meeting where we're hoping, but in that, i- if we can. Get thoughts to you guys now, you're, you would like to receive those from us and we all have to be careful to send the email directly to, you know, not to each other, but to the. To the administration, but that we could sort of use this time. To surface any questions about the agreement and so on. So again, the point being hopefully any concerns we have are addressed before we get. To the next council meeting. So we've got something. Is it, is that all correct understanding?
Well, I'm not sure that everyone has received a copy of the, of those, right? It's only been.
I think it's just us. Has F and A seen anything yet?
Or community development. Yeah, that's it. So I'm not sure that people are posed ready to. Ask questions. So we could. When will be available to send out? Probably tomorrow.
So what I was going to say is we're down to with the latest drafts that we just got today back. I think we're down to, you know, minute details that. You know, can. The big picture of it is all put together and ready for council to start pouring over and asking your questions so that. When we do get together the next time. You come armed, you know, loaded for bear or kitty cats, however you're feeling about the, about the deal. So I think, you know, I think, you know, after tonight, we just got, like I said, a new draft tonight, maybe just accept some edits and then we'll be ready to send those out to everybody.
Just follow up then, ma- mayor, my, so my. Hope. You know, I've seen us. This council worked, in my opinion, fantastically well at. An agreement like this. And if we can just put in the time, particularly over the next week before the meeting with Peter and team. So that we've really thought through any questions, concerns we have, and we can make that meeting really productive for everyone. I think we've got a real chance, a real good chance. Then at our next council meeting of having something that's addressed everything and we're ready to go with. So I, I'd like to see us really try and strive for that.
Sounds good. Any other questions or comments? Council Johnson.
The one more very specific question. Uh, how tall is the building?
At the peak?
Right. Anything else? Excellent. Well, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hamling for, for the wonderful presentation. We're looking forward to meeting next week. So it'd be July thirty first at seven PM in the council chambers. And this, because there's not a meeting following it, it doesn't have to be one hour. It could be. Maybe seven to nine, maybe we'll schedule it that and then. Then we can, if we get done early, that's great. So.
And we're on deck if you need us. Won't be insulted if you don't.
If you have any questions in advance, they would like some additional research done on, please send those, maybe send them to. Our interim city administrator, Mike Chambliss, so that we can get, get the list going. We already have some from the meetings last week. So we were, we are focusing on those right now. So, um, Council Mayhew.
I'm just curious. By the way. I already have three questions that I've written down that I. Wanted to discuss, so I'm, I'm hopeful you and team will be here. My, my guess is that. Their concerns were, once I voiced them, so yeah, yeah, we thought of that. Here's the answer. So, you know, I don't want to get out over my skis on something that's already been thought of, but. Is our plan to have it more of a. Just sort of a. A meeting in the room as opposed to this sort of formal DS kind of approach, because I hope so. I think that'd make it more useful.
Roundtable discussion.
Or just discussion.
I think we have rules to follow and everything else that is stated in a rules procedure. Any other comments or questions? Your approach in hallway.
How close are, do you at least have conceptual dimensional? Uh, diagrams of the building?
Yeah. We, Michael, do you want to speak to that?
No, that's all right. That's all right. It can, I just asked, maybe staff has engagement on those early informal. So that if any of the, any of the ordinances that might come into effect. We can make them aware of and work through any of those issues.
We don't have those documents yet, so.
Well, if they have them, it might be good to start that discussion.
Okay.
They, they've done surveys and everything on. So they know how to orient it. They've designed it based on. Critical areas or anything in the, that whole. And that land, is that what you're talking about or?
My understanding was that the survey the city commissioned last fall. And Michael could speak to this is very comprehensive.
Right.
Not, not conclusive, but. Yeah. And, and I will put a plug in for these guys. They're extraordinarily good about coming back very quickly, get questions. They're just, their response is very fast. So as they come up from you. Forward them through proper channels and these guys will get the answer. Right quick.
So just so everyone knows, I'll be moving that. Pursuing at the next meeting that we suspend the rules so that we can just have more of a conversation. I think. I think that's the path rather than a sort of more controlled, still to very slow conversation. I think just sort of a discussion is how we really get over the finish line, but. We can all decide then.
And then, great. Thank you for the presentation.
I will, I keep expecting to be in the hot seat and it never happens, so.
Right. So we'll look forward to seeing you next week then. And so we have a, we have, you know, more of a council agenda. You don't feel obligated to stay. Okay, next, Mayor Pro Tem Holloway, you have customer liaison appointments.
Yeah, as far as public, the pick for SCA, Councilman Mayhew was our alternate. I'd like to officially do the switch that Councilman Washington will assume the role as alternate to the pick moving forward.
Right. Councilor Mayhew.
Move to approve the appointment.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Mayhew, second by Councilor Johnson, to name Councilor Washington as the pick alternative, alternate. Any discussion? All those papers, CI?
Aye.
Any post name? Great. Nice habit, and he is the new alternate. Moving on to public comment, at this time, we provide time for residents to comment on items not on the agenda. First, a few ground rules. So residents who are not present have a right to have their elected representatives perform their duties. On behalf of the city in an efficient and orderly manner, therefore comments will be limited to three minutes each. Please wait to recognize and state your name and city of residence and record. Director comments to the council as a whole and not to individual members. Please note that this is not a time to ask questions of the council, mayor's staff or agent debate. And respect the decorum of these proceedings as all due respect will be afforded you. So with that. Is there anyone that would like to have state public comment? For items that are not on the agenda. And so raise your hand. I'm looking online as well as. In City Hall. Right. You know, and raising their hands. Next, we move on to the consent agenda. Which contains approval of the city council meeting minutes dated July tenth, twenty twenty-three. With the claims report dated July twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three. AB twenty-three dash zero nine six, City Hall stairs project amendment. Is there motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Second.
It is moved by Mayor Pro Tem Holloway and second by Councilor Washington. Is there any public comment regarding this item? If so, please limit your comments to two minutes. So again, I will look in council chambers. As well as online. If so, please raise your hand. Okay, seeing no one raising their hands, councilors, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, CI?
Aye.
Aye.
Any post name? And motion passes unanimously. And so for the item that. Remove consent agenda should be added to the meeting agenda order of business immediately following the consent agenda. So. The next item is AB twenty-three dash zero nine five. The ILA for the fire and EMS services for Echo Glen Children's Center. Councilor Christensen, would you please read the summary and motion?
Yes, the fire department has been providing fire and EMS services to Echo, excuse me, for Echo. June of two thousand and three. The Department of Children, Youth and Families will pay the city sixteen thousand, five hundred and seventy-eight dollars and ninety-nine cents annually for the two-year term of this agreement. And the motion that is on the table is move to approve the ILA with Echo Glen Children's Center for Fire and EMS Services.
Second.
By Councilor Christensen, second by Councilor One. Is there any public comment regarding this item? History shows that no one locally is. On, is there anyone online that would like to make public comment? Or in chambers, seeing none? I'm concerned, is there any discussion? We do have interim chief Bailey here. This evening, that is happy to answer any questions. My approach in Halloween.
So a couple of questions and at least a statement up front. Consider agenda is business as usual, and I'm, I want to partner with Echo Glen, but I'm not ready for business as usual yet. Given recent event, given recent past events. Okay. Question on the, the rate was, we have a rate by square foot. Was any consideration on that rate given to? Number of events at the facility or the type of facility is that, or is that just? Square footage of the city divided by the cost of fire services?
The square footage is a formula they came up with. The original fee that they gave us was a flat fee of five thousand dollars. That was way back in two thousand and three when it was first signed. They redid it again in, in two thousand and fourteen, saying we want to go to a square footage, which raised it from five thousand. To roughly sixteen thousand that is now. So that's a standard formula that they use. When we looked at the instances, we've been there, we were there twelve times in two thousand and twenty-two. And for the, the amount of money that they're giving us for coverage, that more than covers. The amount of time we go there. It's not like we're there thirty, forty times a year. It seemed like a very equitable number, especially since it's almost three times what it used to be when it first started. And the alternative is, is if we didn't provide service, we would probably still be responding there anyway if we didn't have a contract, because we are the closest unit. So we would respond there besides Fall City. So it didn't seem like. That it was necessarily, you know, the square footage formula that they came up with was inadequate. I have reached out to them. Th- this contract was worked on, you know, by Chief Carrer, so I don't know where the conversations he had with them beforehand. But I did reach out to them to see if they had any information regarding. Inflators, if there was a standard time that they look at that number. And they haven't been, they haven't gotten back to me yet, so I don't have that number. But, you know, from what we've seen, and like I said, we, we were out there twelve times, and that roughly stays about the same every year, and it's usually. Three quarters of the times we've been out there has been for fire alarms. It's been a pretty minor instance, so it seems like it's an adequate amount for the amount of time we're out there.
And the two-year duration was that ours or theirs as far?
It was all theirs. Every contract has been two years, and then it's usually, it will extend for another two years. The last one, you know, I believe the last one didn't come to council. It was just signed by the, by Mayor Larson the last time. So that, that's a standard thing. Everything that we've had our lawyers look through the, the language, none of the language has changed over the years. But there, nobody's asked to have it different than two years.
Counsel, I'm emotionally halfway there of asking that this be a one-year agreement. I, I really want incentive for us to work with Echo Glen to address some of the issues at the site. And so I'm very reluctant to do business as usual on these kinds of things. But I'll leave it to your consideration. I won't make a motion. If somebody else wants to make a motion, I'll vote for it, but I'll hold off for the moment and let this proceed as is.
Councilor Benson?
Yeah, I appreciate the question, because it, you know, just done, I wasn't at the last public safety meeting, so the, the rate seemed. Pretty, pretty reasonable ask, and I wasn't sure that it was covering, so that's really helpful to, to know that. I, I think that the, there have been issues at Echo Glen. I don't. I don't know that I see them as connected to this, though. I, I, I think there, there are safety issues regarding Echo Glen, but I'm not. I'm not sure that I would connect it to the fire department or emergency services. The issues that we've had there. So I would, I would, I would personally not be in favor of. Of I structuring this agreement to try to address those. It, it feels to me like apples to oranges. But I could very well be missing something that you're, a point that you're making.
Councilor Christensen?
I, I do see Councilmember Holloway's or Mayor Pro Tem Holloway's point on this. And I do also have concerns, serious concerns about the safety there as well, and the steps going forward to get those remedied. I think that there's been. Some great first steps in place from the mayor in terms of getting together the stakeholders to address those, and I know that there's going to be ongoing meetings going forward to hopefully address. Those issues on an ongoing basis as well. The. Difficulty here in this particular contract would be that if, you know, we, if we. Do it on a one-year basis, and I could be talked into that. We're still going to be responding to every nine-one-one call, so we don't have a whole lot of leverage to do that. It's just whether. The city and our fire department is going to be. I guess compensated for those calls, because we still do have to respond in the event of emergency, given. The mutual aid agreements that we have in place. So I could be talked into that as well. I just don't know whether that's the right. Path forward to, to address the other issues.
Thank you, Councilor One.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I was at the safe public safety meeting, and I did have a little bit of initial concern. Whether sixteen thousand dollars and some change is appropriate. I believe out of the twelve calls that Chief Bailey has, has. Impplied that a proportion of those have actually turned out to be false alarms. So it's not like twelve fire incidents, twelve aid incidents. And I think at that point. I was satisfied that the sixteen thousand is reasonable, given the fact that. The other choices for us not to have this agreement, that we'd still be going on these calls and still incurring costs. And for the small amount of this contract, I don't know if it's really worth our time to spend staff. And negotiate a different rate than what is already there. There, there are some bigger issues I think that we need to address, and that was part of the reason why I asked to put this on consent agreement. Because it is carrying forward something we've done in the past, and I felt reasonably comfortable with doing that again. So I'm in favor of, of renewing. The contract the way it is, and we can spend the next two years figuring out whether it's equitable or not.
Councilor Johnson?
Yeah, my thoughts are along the same lines as Councilmember Benson, not in that there are not. Safety concerns with regard to Echo Glen, it's just, are these the concerns? That are, are these concerns directly related to what's being proposed here? And I just don't see the connection. If there is one, then absolutely I'm happy to look at that. But for this, it seems like this is what we should be doing anyway. I mean, if they, if someone has a medical emergency of some sort. We're here, we should, we should be willing to help. If there's a fire there, we should be willing to help. And we should be compensated appropriately for it, and it sounds like from what I'm hearing from the experts on the other side, is that yes, this is a reasonable amount. So for those reasons, yeah, I, I am fine with this, unless someone can show me where the connection is to those other issues.
Councilor Mayhew?
Yes, I, I had a similar reaction also as, as Councilman Benson and Councilmember Johnson seems. That these are not connected to concerns that we might have here, which are, are not, I think, fire and EMS. And I'm actually appreciate Councilman Watt pointing out the cost. I, I had a similar initial thought of. You know, is the amount enough to cover, but I think the comments just made, you know, address that. However. Now I'm troubled by some other comments that have been made. So I, I'd like to kind of know the facts. First off. There, there was, I thought I understood someone to say that we have signed an ILA with the state of Washington. To provide services at no cost. And so I'd like to know if that's in fact true, that we've signed such an ILA. And secondly, the notion that we would be expected by the state of Washington to provide services free of charge. Outside of our city seems like a very surprising notion. It seems like they would expect to pay us. For providing services to them. So I, I just got a little confused by what I thought I was hearing about. The facts, having said that, so I'd like to get clarity on that, but if the amount's reasonable, I, I'm for this. I just, I'm troubled by this idea that maybe we have an ILA for zero cost, or that the state expects us to do something for free.
Were you speaking of the mutual aid? Is that the, the portion you were talking, that we'd be responding there anyway?
Well, I thought I heard someone say, we have an ILA in place that requires us to respond. And even at zero cost, which I thought was very surprising.
I believe he was referring to the mutual aid. The way that it's set up right now is that. That territory, that area falls into Fire District twenty-seven. When they built the parkway, they were the closest unit. When they built the parkway, we became the closest unit, so they turned over the contract to us. What I believe they were referring to is responding anyway is we have, most of the fire departments around us use the idea of the closest unit response. So because of that, if we didn't, if we decided not to sign a contract with Echo Glen, it would revert back to Fall City. Because of the calls that came in, if a call, medical call came in. They would, the dispatcher would look at the map and they would see that we are the closest unit, so we would still respond, and you'd probably get both Fall City and Snow Quamie going. And in regards to the mutual aid, they're just like mutual aid with, that we have now, there would be no compensation for that. That would just be helping each other out and. That, you know, the, the edict of having the closest unit respond is good for the citizens, because if we're out of position. North Bend is quicker. By all means, let's, them come first. We're also going to go to, and we might end up transporting the patient, but you want to have the closest person there. Depending on the emergency. So that might have been what he was referring to, and hopefully that maybe answers that a little bit.
Well, it absolutely does. So just to be, make sure I understood your response, the concept of mutual aid. It, it's not that we're contractually bound to, it's that that's the practice, and we, along with our surrounding fire districts. Support each other in this mutual aid way. They support us when we need it, we support them. So in this case, it's a question of will we be the primary contractor? And that's what this contract is all about, is being that primary contractor.
Yeah, there, there is a mutual aid agreement that speaks to, if I, if we ask for help, that the other departments are going to provide it for us without cost. So there is an agreement to that, but that's just a general around, you know, everywhere. So yes. We would know if we decide not to have a contract, we'd no longer be the primary. Both of us would be responding. They would be doing the reports. They would be doing investigations, things like that, but we'd still probably be sending a unit to a fire alarm or medical because we're the closest.
Got it. Thank you.
Councilor Martin, did you have, and then Councilor Benson?
Okay. Point of, point. Did I misspeak? On, on making the, the effort or the inference that. Regardless if we have this in place, because that wasn't my intention.
I probably misunderstood.
Yeah.
We can check the tape later.
I, I did not mean to confuse the matter.
Councilor Benson?
My apologies. And Chief Bailey, you can speak to this better than I can, but it seems to me that, you know, mutual, mutual aid is incredibly important. Tenant for running fire departments, but. The fact that we give mu- mutual aid and get mutual aid does not mean that it all works out evenly. And I, when we've looked at the mutual aid we've given, it has, at least, maybe I'm, maybe I'm. Me what it does, but it seems like we're usually given more than we're getting. So the, the more we can reduce that, the better it is for the, for the city. So I, I think that is one more reason. To, to vote for this particular agreement as written.
Councilor Halloween?
So a couple of times you asked me, what's the connection? The connection is we've. Engagements with Echo Glen in the past. And here we are. So I will take every opportunity to incentivize the partnership, I hope, is taking effect. And concrete changes. And I particularly use the word concrete in its form of physical entity. So forgive me, but every, every time. Get to that condition, we're doing that partnership, we're really working on the issues around Echo Glen. I'm going to pull this into conversations with us. It's all connected by driving that partnership. And I, I understand that part of that may be making some of the issues for Echo Glen somebody else's issue. But as I said, I'm not ma- I, I want to have the, wanted to have the discussion. I'm not making a motion.
All right. So any other comments or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the ILA with Echo Glen's Children's Center, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any post name? Okay, passes unanimously. Is there any other report for Public Safety Committee?
Uh, yeah, so I was just going to give a quick update, because we received a number of public comments relating to the use of electronic bikes in the e-dirt bikes recently. Specifically, there have been concerns and calls to the police about people operating them in unsafe fashion. So last public safety meeting, we had a great presentation by interim chief Lynch. And he went over the existing laws that are in place that govern usage. And what's appropriate and what is not. Specifically, there are laws in place under the RCWs. As well as the municipal code and specifically SMC. Ten dash thirty-five dash zero three zero G states that recreational devices shall not be operated in a negligent manner upon any city street. Or upon city property. The steps from here on out, the police department is going to work on kind of an educational campaign, so that the public, parents, children. Know what the rules are, and then to the extent that people are misusing them. So that the public, parents, children, know what the rules are, and then to the extent that, uh, people are misusing them. Um, I think it would be great if that could be reported to the police department for further action. If anybody has any comments or concerns, please reach out.
Council Mayhew.
Yeah, so I, I've been aware of some of the public discussion. I myself, I only be, started paying attention to it, cuz. So I'm lucky enough on my car to have a, um, uh, auto speed thing that, so, so I'm always driving at the speed limit down. My street because the car is setting the speed. Um, so, uh, I was just very alarmed at two young. So preteen, uh, girls, uh, riding their E. I think one was an e-bike and one was an e-scooter, and they were going much faster than I was, um, zooming through sidewalks onto the street. Using sidewalks, never slowing down, and neither one wearing a helmet. Um, and so it just seemed very, um, worrying to me. So I'm really pleased, I, I, you know. Trying to chase down those two particular girls is, I think, not so much the point as, um, what I really would have liked is if they're. I, my guess is their parents didn't know that was happening and would have been pleased. So, um. A, a public education, I think, especially if we can use the cities, um, you know, as, as we heard at our last council meeting, we're getting more and more reach. With our, um, uh, with our city Facebook page with press releases, um, you know. Um, mailer, the utility mailer, just anything we can do, I, I, I just think we will all be. Uh, heartbroken if, if something were to happen to, to one of these kids. So I think that's a great thing to do and I, I just. Kind of the full PR, if you will, resources of the city behind this, cuz, um, I'm worried.
Council Johnson.
Yeah, it was, uh, uh, watching the X Games, it's not really a habit, it just happened to be that in the hotel we had cable and hey, look at that, there's the X Games. And I was, uh, uh, very disappointed to see that apparently they don't have a rule that their athletes have to wear helmets. While they're doing all kinds of things where they're, uh, inches away from, uh, disaster. Uh, so. Our kids are watching that and they're thinking, oh, those are the cool people. The cool people don't wear helmets, and I want to be like the cool people. Um, so just, um, you know, trying to, to counter that message. You'll, you'll never beat, uh, cable or streaming, but the most we can do, um, using the resources that we have for public education, I think. That's a wonderful thing. Um, I did have just one quick question, if I may take the, the time to ask. Um, are bicycles allowed on the pathway that's adjacent to Snoqualmie Parkway?
Uh, we can have Captain Lynch come up, but there are three different classifications of the e-bikes with pedals. Which I like to come up. Do you ask about bicycles? What are you asking about?
Bicycles, e-bikes.
Anything.
Well, yeah, I was just wondering if they are allowed on that strip because I think it's ambiguous.
In the outlooks. I just wanna make sure the, the actual sidewalk on the Parkway.
Yeah, it's kind of the, the paved path that's, that follows the pro- the, the Parkway.
Yes, I believe they are. Um, but they are under. They're under city ordinances that would not allow for neglectful usage. Um, they can't come up behind people and run people into the. Into the, the ground and like, we've had a couple of those incidents. Um, those are, um, are reckless, so they. They, they would still fall under, um, they would still fall under written ordinance to, to operate them safely.
And it's one quick follow-up for me. And then, uh, also, do we have a city, um, uh, ordinance with regard to helmet use?
We do.
I thought that we did, yeah. Thanks.
I do.
In fact, we updated it when the skate park came in.
That's what I thought, yeah.
It didn't have an ordinance for helmets in a park, so, so it was helmets everywhere else but parks, so now we have it everywhere, so. Note that you have to wear a helmet, no matter what. Council Benson?
Uh, in years past, we've had a pretty robust, uh, bike rodeo in Snoqualmie that, um. I mean, that's what I, that's where I remember learning the rules when I was a kid was at my elementary school bike rodeo. Um, and, uh, you know, maybe we need to do whatever we can. Uh, within our power to encourage the elementary schools and, and middle school, uh, maybe in the high school to do. Some kind of education like that, because it, it, when I was a kid, I remember it being a very big. Part of the education that we got in PE, that we learned how to properly use our bicycles and, and legally use them. Um, uh, so I don't know what, what we can do as a, as a council to encourage that to come back. But, um, that was, that was a really great event. Uh, and I think, I think it's missing. It's clearly missing.
I think the police in, well.
So it's his fault.
Well, it is in conjunction with tenor jeans. That's the bike rodeo.
Kind of like everything else that went by the wayside in twenty twenty. Um, it's just taken some time to get back on our feet. As far as those extra events. Um, the mayor's gonna speak to one tonight that we have next, um, Tuesday for the first time since COVID. For a national night out event. Um, having the bike rodeo back is very important to me. Um, I used to run bike rodeos at my other agencies. Um, as far as the, the vision that I have for this media outreach. It's going to be widespread. I'm talking, I would like to, um, I've already assigned our PIO to work with the city PIO to make a. Um, a video, an educational video to put out on social media. Um, I'm wanting them to reach out to newspapers. For somebody to do an article on it. I'm wanting them to reach out to, um, our, our television networks and have. An actual, uh, news spot on, on those news networks. Um, come September, when we're back in school. That's when I'm really gonna start pushing the information out from elementary school through high school. Um, you know, whether it be us coming to talk at assemblies, pushing flyers home to, um, to the families. Um, that, every little bit will help in, in getting the word out, so it's a, uh, it is a problem. And like I said, um, last week at Public Safety, I didn't even know what some of those laws were. I mean, I had, I thought, oh my, we're gonna have to write agenda bills and we're gonna have to have new ordinances. We don't need those, we need education.
Thank you. Is there anything else from Public Safety?
Nothing further.
Moving on, Community Development Committee?
Uh, no report, you kind of got it earlier today.
Any report from Parks and Public Works Committee?
No report.
How about Finance Administration Committee?
I think we had most of that earlier, so no report.
Okay, next up is the mayor's report. So first of all, Councilman Watten and I presented to the Washington State Transportation Commission meeting on July nineteenth. Regarding the route jurisdiction transfer of the Snoqualmie Parkway. So there will be some additional information that we will provide. And their next meeting is in October, which they will issue their final determination. So if approved, then they would actually draft a bill for the upcoming legislative si- session that has to be then approved by, through the leg- legislation. Um. Peter Sound Regional Council awarded Vision twenty fifty award to the, to the Snoqualmie Valley Transportation. Um, Mount Si Senior Center and the Cities of North Bend and Snoqualmie. And the Vision twenty fifty award celebrates progress in enhancing the region's communities and natural environment while advancing equity and opportunity. And so, um, SVT, Mount Si Senior Center and the cities were awarded the Working Together category. So we're honored for promoting a livable region by helping to implement Vision twenty fifty. Um, the regional growth management and economic and transportation strategy, so. We really value Snoqualmie Valley Transfer Transportation, cuz they really do provide a lot of, a great service throughout our valley. Um, when Metro isn't there, they're actually there, so it's great. We did, the Cities of Snoqualmie and Duval have signed the settlement agreement effective July eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. Um, many of you have seen the famous day out with Thomas train for the past several weekends. This is truly an ex- great example of bringing tourism to the area. Um, all tickets for the total of nine days were completely sold out. And our downtown businesses were really busy, so we really thank Northwest Railway for, for having this and, um, persevering through everything. Then it's, it's been really fantastic for, for our economy. Let's see, this Thursday, the, at the Snoqualmie Community Park Amphitheater, which is on our community park. We had the chat with councilmembers from five, six PM, so I know several you are planning to be there. Um, and this is right before the Music in the Park event happens, which starts at six thirty. As interim chief Lynch mentioned, um, the Snoqualmie Police Department's National Night Out. Is August first at the community park from four to eight PM, and I heard there might be a dunk tank there, so be sure to show up, it's supposed to be a lot of fun. And then hopefully you've seen the shop ship support Snoqualmie marketing campaign. Um, this is encouraging people to shop locally to avoid the traffic congestion that we were going to be seeing for the next. Couple of years through state out, the interchange and state road eighteen. Um, and, you know, save time to support the local businesses by shopping closer to home this summer. And I think kudos to our city staff and chamber who have worked together on this campaign. And I think that is. That is it. So the next item.
Here.
Yes, that's may you.
Yeah, if I could just ask a question and, um. Not necessarily looking for an answer, so perhaps more of a rhetorical question, but I, I was down, um. For, uh, both days of this weekend, um, about midday, what a fantastic event, um, brings. Uh, the, the, uh, Thomas the Tank Engine event and brought so many people in. Um, it's just really, uh, um, just thrilling to see. Um, two, two things I noticed, um, and, 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 um, ju- just wanted to bring them up. And perhaps this is something that, um, Community Development Committee could take up, or maybe it's something mayor just administration could, could think about. Um, but the, uh, I, I noticed a couple of things. One is I, I have seen the new signs talking about back in parking. They're fairly small, they're not very noticeable. In fact, I, I think if I hadn't known that we put those up, I may not have noticed them. But here's what I noticed, an extraordinary number of people not back in parking. And of course, all the part of the, uh, traffic congestion problems of that and safety issues that that creates. Um, so I think, I think we still perhaps have a back in problem. To, you know, I think we're in need of more solution and perhaps more thought could be given to that. Um. The, the second thing, uh, or, or sort of related to that, I noticed that. The, while all the angle parking along railroad avenue, um, not all of it, but a lot of it was full. Um, there was still plenty of parking, um, up, say, towards Northern Street on that, uh, lot that's, um. Uh, just in from there and, um, plenty of parking, uh, down here, this end of, uh, downtown. But both the angle parking and then I think the, the church parking lot, I think perhaps is also city parking. Uh, I'm not sure of the details on that. But in any event, it occurred to me that, um, it seemed to me that a lot of the visitors didn't realize that that parking was also available to them. So it seems like more signage, especially closer to the Parkway saying, hey, you can park here. Um, that, you know, the head will only, you know, you know, as you go down, it will be back in parking. Only seems like we could do some things with signage to attract. More parking into those other spots, so maybe we could give some more thought to that. I think that would really help perhaps with congestion. And so then the second thing kind of related that, that also maybe some thought could be given to is, um. The, there are a few of our businesses downtown that, um. Need people to come in and do short-term parking. The people then access that business and then leave. Um, so I wonder if we perhaps could give some thought. To some of that back in angle parking that's near, say, between King and, um. Sorry, what is this street right outside us? River, between King and River in particular, maybe reserving some of those spots for thirty-minute parking. Uh, I understand that that brings up a question of enforcement, but, you know, I, I think if we first set the rule. We can then see if we have any enforcement issue, but that, doing something like that. Might really help some of our businesses. So again, just want to raise it as a question, don't know if it's been thought about. But if not, perhaps some thoughts, I, I think we could potentially make a few fixes that would even make things better. I don't know.
Right, so there are signs, um, that's on list to add parking, more parking lot signs, especially near, um, mentioned the. Methodist Church, cuz that is, half of it is our parking area. And most likely during northern or northern area. Um, and there are short-term parking also that so allows people to run into the flower shop. Or to, um, certain areas just to kind of pick up their, their quick purchase and go. Those are about, I think, fifteen minute. At most. So there's a couple of those already over there.
So it's my understanding that some of the businesses downtown, just some of them, many of them, just to be clear, I. They just love all this traffic, it's fantastic for our city, but there are a few of them that have, as I understand, the perception that. There needs to be a bit more of that short-term parking, that they feel sort of, um. Uh, that their, their head counts go down during these events. Um, and so maybe if we, you know, this may be something we could help them out with.
Council Benson?
Yeah, I, I had that experience with the station barber where she said her, her, uh, business takes a huge dip on those Saturdays. Where Thomas the Train is, and obviously that's one business out of many, but one of the things that I love about. Councilman Mayhew's idea is that if we can direct some of that parking to that northern lot and to the church lot. It actually encourages people to stay longer and, and, uh, Councilman Mayhew's talked, uh. Really articulately about how when we make those visits a little, little longer, the benefit to the city is. Amazing. So, I'm creating, you know, coming up with some good signage that encourages people to make a day of it. Uh, I think it, uh, could be good for those, those businesses that need that shorter parking and. All the businesses in general, really.
Great. Thank you. Any comments? Um. We will take that. We will look into that, so. So next agenda item is Commission Committee Liaison Reports. So are there any councilmembers, any reports? Any, how about regional? Any regional updates?
Well, the day that we went down to Olympia, that afternoon I spent in Taquilla area. And so part of the Regional Transit Committee, I, um, so it's Metro, so I went to the Metro South Base. Their South Bus Base, and so we toured the facility and can learn about the operations, you know, how they, how they assign drivers and just kind of the overall process. Um, but this is also their electrification system area and so, you know, their plan is to be. One hundred percent zero emissions fully by twenty thirty-five, so they're gonna have to build more electrification areas. And some will need to be in other settings other than, you know, just at the bus bases. They need to be maybe some local areas such as. Snoqualmie or North Bend. If you're gonna do their buses, if it's fully electrified, it's like a hundred fifty miles right now. Um, before you need a chart. Meaning the bus route that they are taking, that you're gonna wear those batteries down pretty quickly, so they're gonna need like patient is. And other areas than just the bus bases, and so there may be, maybe charging places out here for it as well. But all of their metro vans, um, so anything else that they have besides the buses will also be fully electrified. So we'll have to see if we can partner with them, um, with our electrified vehicles as well, so. You know, but it was, it was fascinating to see them. All right. So next item, we do have. Um, executive, several executive sessions, so we have, we will have a, a first executive session and then. Reconvene council for possible action. And then at that point, I'll read in the additional executive sessions, which there will be no action following. So this will allow our. Our staff to go home after, after the first executive session. So the first one is executive session pursuant to RCW forty-two dot three zero dot one one zero. One A, little I, to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency matters relating to agency enforcement actions. Or to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency litigation or potential litigation to which the. See the government body or a member acting in official capacity, it's likely to become a party when public. Knowledge regarding the discussion is likely to result in an adverse legal or financial consequence to the agency lasting approximately. Five minutes. We'll do, we'll five minutes and then we'll actually, yeah, five minutes. Um, so those attending the session will include our interim city attorney, David Lenahan. Our interim city administrator, Mike Chambliss, and I believe that's it.
And I believe that's it, I'm not sure that. Our. Finance, she's not there, okay, so just those two, as well as council and myself. So possible action will be taken following the executive session, so after the executive session is concluded, we will return to open session approximately. Would just say eight forty, if we need a couple minute break. Mayor Procham Halli.
Would just, uh, are there, are there other staff required for the other two close sessions, or can? Can they go?
Everyone else go home, other than the two staff that I've mentioned. And Dina. So we will. Go out, we'll come back in at eight forty, reconvene. Motion, and then we will read in the other executive sessions and then everyone else go home, so. Right? Ready, okay. So, now eight forty, and our. Regular session is reconvened, um, all council members are present, so is there a motion? Councilor Johnson.
Move to approve the separation agreement between the city of Snoqualmie and Perry Pips.
Says move by Councilor Johnson, second by Councilor Christensen. Any discussion? Cena, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Any opposed name? And it's unanimous, and the separation agreement is approved, so council, we have um. And more executive sessions, and so we will, I'll read in this in and then. We will, um, no action is anticipated following the conclusion of the executive session. Will adjourn directly from the executive session and not return to open session. Excuse me, the city clerk will be informed of the concluding time for the executive sessions, which will be reflected in meeting minutes. So the next one is the. Um, same pursuant to forty-two dot three zero dot one one zero one AI. Um, to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency matters relating to agency enforcement actions or to discuss legal counsel representing the agency litigation. Um, and this is previously read in, so this one would probably be. You say twenty minutes? So, um, we anticipate that will last twenty minutes. Then we have an executive session pursuant to RCW forty-two dot three zero one one zero one AI. To discuss legal counsel representing the agency matters relating to agency enforcement actions or to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency litigation or potential. Litigation to which. The governing body or a member acting in official pa- capacity. Um, is likely to become a party. When the public knowledge regarding the discussion is likely to result in an adverse legal or financial consequence, and that one shall be.
Uh, probably ten minutes.
There's two.
Yes.
On us, okay. And then this. Then the. Next one is executive session pursuant to RCW forty-two dot three zero dot one one zero one C to consider. The minimum price at which real estate will be offered for sale or lease, when public knowledge regarding such consideration. Would cause a likelihood or decrease price, however, final action selling or leasing public property shall be taken into a meeting. Open to the public lasting, this will be lasting approximately fifteen. About forty-five minutes from now, so I anticipate that we would then um. Adjourn at nine thirty. Directly out of, we will not be going back into open session as stated before, so. Alright, we will. Close out this meeting and go into executive session.